Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council and staff that are with us this evening for the regular council, a regular session of council for June the 8th, 2021. I'll do a few housekeeping items. This meeting is being, oh, virtually is being livestreamed over the town's YouTube channel. To access the agenda, it is online at thetownofgreaternappany.com so that you can follow along with the agenda. The Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, Towns Council, Town Council Rules of Procedure, Code of Conduct and other pertinent legislation apply to these proceedings as if they were an in-person meeting. If any member's connection to the meeting is interrupted, then I will ask council to pause until the member can reconnect. If the member has not reconnected within five minutes, then the meeting will resume. I will do a roll call for the minutes, which are the official record for this meeting. I'll do it with Ward 1, Councilor McCormack.
Present.
Ward 2, Councilor Richardson.
Ward 2 present.
Ward 3, Councilor Penal.
Ward 3 present.
Ward 4, Councilor Norrie.
Ward 4 present.
Ward 5, Councilor Johnson.
Ward 5 present.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser.
Deputy Mayor is present.
Madam Clerk, I would ask that you state the staff members who are participating with us this evening.
Through your worship, we have Raymond Calery, CIO, Brant Zatterberg, General Manager of Community and Corporate Services/Acting Deputy CIO, Paul Dober, General Manager of Financial Services Treasurer, Peter Dapo, General Manager of Infrastructure Services, John Koning, Fire Chief, Jeff Cuthill, Director of Capital Works, Kristy Kelly, Manager of Environmental Compliance, Brianna Clement, Community Engagement Clerk, and myself, Lindsay T, Deputy Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, before we begin this evening's, this evening's agenda and meeting, I'd like to take a minute and ask that we all take a moment to reflect on the two things that have happened in the past week that have or should rock us to the core. The discovery of 215 Indigenous children buried in a mass grave at a former Cammupps Residential Group. All levels of government are working and need to continue to work toward the healing of all involved. Our thoughts and prayers are with anyone and everyone to help with and understand and heal. The senseless and horrific hate crime in London, Ontario, yes, Ontario, has brought to the forefront how hate, lack of respect, and lack of understanding continue to see these terrible hate crimes continue. For the family and friends of those lost and for the city of London, we pray for recovery from this unimaginable event, as well as for all Canadians, in fact, all people, to find a way to stop the hate and start the acceptance of difference. I'm going to quote Martin Luther King. This has come up in my feed a couple of times in the past two or three weeks with everything that's going on in the world. Returning, returning hate for hate multiplies hate. Adding deeper darkness to a night already devoid of stars. Darkness cannot drive out darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate. Only love can do that. I thank Martin Luther King Jr. for those wise words. With that, I will call the meeting to order. I look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda as presented. Please move by. Councilor Penal, Deputy Mayor Kaiser, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, there are no presentations tonight. We do have a deputation from Chris Broschain regarding the location of the town's flagpoles. And all of council and those that are following along with the agenda will see that they do have the information that was prepared last March, just so that you have some history on what has been brought forward on this subject. So maybe we could bring Chris in to do his deputation, please, and thank you.
Through your worship, he's now in the meeting.
Maybe I don't have room for him on my screen. There he is, Chris. I just had to go over one. Good evening, Chris, and welcome this evening. I just give you a little bit of a run-through. You do have five minutes for your deputation. So I ask you to stick as closely to that as you can, and certainly council will take the time to answer questions, or sorry, to ask questions of you and give you time to answer on them. So welcome, and I'll let you go ahead, please.
All right, thank you, Mark. The purpose of the deputation is to advocate for a more visible and accessible placement for the pride flag and for more visual support from the Town of Greater Nappany during the month of June, the LGBT Communities Pride Month. Location at North Fred Hall is neither visible, accessible, or inclusive for everyone. The hope is to foster a community of support and acceptance. The location is a visible representation of support. Pride colors and the pride flag represent diversity and love and support. It's no secret that today's youth struggle with mental health and addictions far more than any previous generation. The LGBTQ+ communities at a higher risk is a higher-risk community for mental health and addiction problems. The LGBTQ+ is a higher risk because of their unfair treatment and lack of support they experience in their everyday lives just for being who they, being true to who they truly are. Then compounded with COVID-19, where youth have been out of school for months, some in unfortunate circumstances with no outlet. The flag could be that one symbol of support that starts conversation, that helps these children find positive outlets. Studies as recent as 2020 have shown that when communities show support for their members' autonomy to express their identities, overall psychological wellbeing is higher. The flag is recognized as a symbol of support and the LGBTQ+ community, our youth, recognize this as a symbol of support that provides affiliation and positive feelings of themselves and for their future. It also signals to potential residents that we are supportive and accepting community. The Greater Nappany Gender and Sexuality Alliance has proposed such sites for flagpoles at, say, such as Springside Park, the Strathcona Paper Centre, or installing flagpoles at the Centre Street end of Town Hall. One, one member also mentioned the lamppost at Town Hall on Centre Street that already has hardware installed for banners that are currently not in use. Members of the Greater Nappany Gender and Sexuality Alliance express willingness to fundraise for any cost incurred for these flags or flagpoles.
Okay, Chris, thank you.
Yep.
But questions, questions for Chris on, on his deputation? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Kaiser.
Thank you, worship. I just want to say thank you, Chris, for, for, again, having the courage and the strength to come forward and speak your mind on this matter. I know it's very important to you. You and I go way back. And, and, you know, I guess, the only thing I want to say is, I'm sorry that we didn't start this discussion, including you, and that we, that we didn't have this discussion sooner, so we couldn't capture it in this month of this year. And that, that, you know, the month had already begun and the flag had already been placed on North Fred prior to that. And, and, you know, hopefully, we'll, we'll, we'll get to a better place for everybody and, and every group that, that has proclamations that, that we can have something that, that sits well with everybody. But I'm certainly glad that you're here raising this issue and having the dialogue now. So I just wanted to thank you.
Thanks, man.
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Chris, if you have enough comments that you want to make back to the deputy mayor.
I just wanted to say thanks, Deputy Mayor Kaiser. I appreciate your support.
Any other questions from council members? So, Chris, I'm not sure whether I misunderstood. You're not looking just to have your proclamation and pride, and the pride flag moved. You're looking for all, all flags to be moved?
Yeah, if that's what it takes, then yes, for sure.
Because we certainly, and, and this is going to be with, with council's, council's permission, I just want to make sure that I've got all of council. Yeah, I do. Okay, I just, we've got so many faces that aren't coming out on the screen here for me. Everyone, everyone is treated exactly the same when it comes to flags. I agree with you 100%. I would far, far rather see the flags. My choice would be Centre Street with the three, three flagpoles. And we've always sort of put it off simply because not knowing what we were doing with Town Hall. It actually is the back of Town Hall, but the front of Town Hall is not all that visible. So to me, it would be, a solution would be to put three new poles there. There are flags that are flying, if I'm not mistaken, at some of our municipal buildings. Am I right there, Chris?
Oh, yes. The fire station is, is flying a flag for sure, is the one that I know of. And then the North Fred Hall.
North Fred Hall and OPP.
Yes.
Dorland Fire Hall.
Yes.
I don't know about Robin Fire Hall. I can't, I can't, I can't speak to that. Is there anything else that, that council wants to say before I can continue on? I see that, sorry, go ahead, Councilor Penal, and I'll, I'll try and finish off.
Thank you, worship. There, there's also a flag at the Southview Public School as well. I just want to say, say to everybody that's listening, is that when council made this decision back last year, there's a lot of, lot more behind the scenes too, that, that you can read in the report that's provided in the agenda for the reason for where it is. You know, if there was going to be larger groups that were going to be at the flag raising and stuff like that. But, you know, COVID came and hit us, so, you know, large groups and gatherings and maybe even the use of the hall that we were thinking that maybe would be asked of us, so it would be there. That, everybody can read that's in the report that's provided with us. So that's what I wanted to say about that. And also, any, any location that is going to be chosen is going to be hard to see. And I'm not just speaking about your group that we're talking about now, but for all groups, as the mayor suggested, it's, it's hard to check every box, but I just wanted to make mention of the reason why council did choose the location of where it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Penal, for, for pointing that out, because it, it was maybe the least favorable, but, but the best at the time. Nothing was ever meant to, to diminish whose flag, and our flags have been there. And many, I guess where I want to go from here, Chris, is everybody needs to bring forward their, their proclamations. What I would like to see is that in, say, I guess you got to go almost in November and December to, to plan for the following year, ask everyone to put in, you know, their proclamations, because we get doubled up on them. I think there's CNIV and Pride are both this week, so we need to be able to have room to, to accommodate everything that's needed. A lot of municipalities are going to lights instead of flags, just because they can put them on multiple buildings. I do, I do think, I'm, I'm going to 100% agree with you, and you've got some really good backing and people behind you, that, in my opinion, more, more attention could be paid to either chalk drawings, sidewalk drawings, crosswalk drawings. But all that can't just be done at the snap of a finger partway into the month. And please take that comment with the utmost of respect. Had this come to us a lot earlier, there probably would be things that could be done out there. And hopefully, for, for next year, there's been more, more attention paid, more things that have come to light, and obviously much more support that, that we can get together and make sure that things are done. I know that there's been a lot of, a lot of talk on Facebook with some really good recommendations. So I'll look to council, council to see if they want to put forward any kind of a motion to do more investigating, to, to get a better policy out there as to what can be done. We, we can't, we can't and should not control any group of people that want to do some special things for recognizing groups, as long as it is within, you know, A, legal, and B, something that, that's not, not going to put us in, in any kind of jeopardy as, as far as people getting hurt. And I know that painting sidewalks, doing things like that, as long as it's approved by council and staff, it, it's not a bad idea. Chris, would that be something that would make it easier for a committee next year?
Oh, I think it would make it easier. And with all due respect, I, I under, I did not understand that I would have to do a proclamation every year. I think maybe with Nappany being such a small community, and just now having some sort of small committee together might make the difference. But June comes every year. I mean, sorry, Pride Month comes every year in June. So I just assumed that it was one of those things that once you make the proclamation, just because it's such a big deal in other communities around us, and it doesn't seem to be like, it doesn't seem to like they have as many hoops to jump through. And I understand that we have policies for a reason, and you guys are just following policies, but it just seems a little frustrating at times.
And I'm going to, I, I'm going to go back to you on that, that, Chris, is, is all municipalities have to follow the same proclamation rules. So therefore, the proclamation, and maybe they do it differently in that they have a committee, say Kingston, in that they have someone on staff that goes back historically and says, this is what we're going to be asked for. Because what if we get two or three in one month? How, how do we make sure that each is given the proper recognition? So, but they also have a very well-oiled machine in Kingston and in Bellville and in Prince Edward County that sits outside council, that sits outside staff, but with staff assistants to do things. So it has been a disappointing year to, to perhaps give the exposure and give the support. But I think that we can certainly make a lot better, a lot, make better effort together next year. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
I did, worship, and thank you for that. And you kind of, I'm going to segue off to your last word, so we can do it together. Chris, you've, you've struck a committee or you have a committee locally?
Yes, yeah.
I'm just sort of start, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking out loud, and I'd like, I'd like to suggest that maybe it would be a really well-received if a suggestion came from the community or possible suggestions, multiple, of what would work. And maybe that means reaching out to some of the other groups. And, and if we could look back and see some of the proclamations we've done in the last year or, or two, and, and some of the groups that asked for similar types of flags or lighting of the falls or whatever, that then that could be put through our staff to say, what's reasonable, what's the cost, what's the impact? So that, you know, we've got some time. Obviously, we missed this June for, for Pride Month. We've, you know, we've got what we've got for this year. But thinking ahead, we've got a whole year before, before, you know, your personal interest for next year, but there's other groups that, you know, in, in there too. Does that sit well with you, the idea of generating some suggestions for us to? I, I, I just don't want to see us sit back and throw something out there and say, this is what we decided to do, and we're back here again next year, you know?
No, 100%, that's exactly how I'm feeling. I think that's a great idea.
Anything else from council? I, I am going to make a suggestion here and, and maybe give a little direction to see if we can't, through our communication through Brianna and, and through Mr. Zatterberg, if there can't be a communication for other groups and advertising that would let people know what proclamations are. It's all on our website. Everything's there, but to put out examples as to, to how it is, I don't think we have a month that we don't have a proclamation, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe December might be the only one. But to lay it out so that it's easier for groups, and that if there is something special that they want, and Chris, that would include whether it was artworks, whether it was paintings, whether it was anything like that, that that could be pre-arranged too early, so that we know. The only thing that would stop us from, from your, your group doing any paintings on sidewalks and so on might be snow in June. And I see there are some places out north or out, out west that are getting that. But if that would help you with your committee, maybe, maybe that would be good. Now, Chris, I think you're frozen. Are you hearing me?
I'm hearing you.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't, wasn't sure whether you were getting it. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the fact that Chris has come to speak to us on this subject. And we also, just a couple of weeks ago, with the Quinte Marketing Board, participated in their program to draw attention to this group in particular. But I really liked the fact that he was willing to look at, we need to have a program that works for every group. And I'm wondering if it is possible for the page that we usually have in the newspaper, because there is almost every month, as you said, a different group that we're putting up flags for or lights for. If something can be added just to the newspaper page as an ongoing reminder of this is, so in, for example, this is Pride Month. So just the, the flag and the logo underneath it, Cancer Awareness Month, if we can save a little corner of that marketing element that the town has to help up and above, just up and above putting up the flags, because that will also then reach more people.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Johnson. If I'm not mistaken, whether it's Mr. Zatterberg or Madam Clerk that could tell us, I, I do believe our proclamations do go in the paper, do they not? I'm pretty, pretty sure, pretty sure that they do. Mr. Zatterberg? Oh, thank you, thank you. No, thanks, thanks, Lindsay.
Yeah, sorry, through your worship, they, I believe they do, but I can get confirmation on that for you.
Yeah, that would be good. Okay, so the directions to staff with, sorry, go ahead, Councilor Johnson.
My thought was more just on the graphic side of it as opposed, as opposed to wording. Sometimes a picture is noticed much quicker.
No, no, good suggestion. Okay, so I think staff has some direction. Chris, thank you very much for bringing this forward. If at any time you want to sit down with staff or council members to look forward to next year with your suggestions, but let's make sure that we, we get ourselves organized early so that we can, we can do this and all other proclamations and all other recognitions in a much better way. Okay, does that help?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much, Chris. Have a good evening.
You too.
So a motion to note and receive the deputation from Chris, please move by. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Councilor Norrie. We've, we've lost Councilor Richardson. Oh, no, because I've got, sorry, I've got two pages, because I've got so many people on tonight. So I have a mover and a seconder, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Thanks, Chris. Good night.
Your worship, before we continue, can I give you a little help?
Sure.
If you go to more on your meeting settings and then click on meeting settings, in that list, it'll show non-video participants. If you switch that off and then switch it back on, all of the cameras that are active will be at the top, and all of the closed cameras will be at the bottom. And you'll have all of us on one screen.
Thank you, non-video participants.
Switch it off and then back on again.
Thank you. So now staff wants me. Tough nins can't do it. So we do have Lindsay. Good, thank you. Okay, so did we vote on that, on favor of the noting and receiving? Yes, we did that. Okay. On to the next. Motion, please, for the adoption of the reg, minutes from the regular session of council, May 25th, 2021. Move by. Councilor McCormack, seconded by Councilor Richardson, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Correspondence for information, correspondence for information dated June 8th, 2021. You have a recommendation to receive, but you also, if you wish to pull anything, we're welcome to do that to council's wishes. Motion to receive. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Councilor Penal, anyone wishing to speak to any of the correspondents? If not, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Unfinished business. Correspondence for action, we have none this evening, which is rare. Correspond, sorry, unfinished business. Was there anyone that wanted to speak to anything under unfinished business? Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Thank you, worship. I, I came up quick. Usually I expect to see it further down the agenda. Correspondence recently. I just wanted to take a moment, if I could, to come back to the item we discussed at the last meeting around the potential for a rail trail on the east side of town from the 401 out to Minks Bridge. Obviously, I spoke kind of in opposition to it, and I'm not going to go off. I had something sort of prepared, but I'm not going to go too far off, other than to say, you know, I guess, I think that when most people look out there, they see a big empty field. And paralleling that farm with mine, when I look out there, I see my backyard. It's where I live, work, and play, and so it's a little more personal. It's not, it's a business for sure, but anyways. But the reason I wanted to bring it up was because I wanted to suggest an alternative that as we're drafting ideas and as staff are bearing, like, concepts, that I'd like to propose an alternative, that if I'm going to say I want to shoot that one down, here's something else to consider. And the consideration is this. When we think of trails and we think of green spaces, it occurs to me that we're working on a walking trail along the river now as it goes through town. We're looking at the potential that the Gibbard District would have some sort of waterfront trail in the future. And so it occurs to me that it makes good sense that maybe we could continue the trail from King Street Park along the river's edge, one side or the other, or maybe both, all the way out to the Huron Street Park, which I realize the 401's a bit of a hurdle. It's not much of a bridge or underpass at the 401. But I think of green spaces as, and, and the river as being such a beautiful walking trail. And if we were to consider maybe even making the upper river above the falls to be a non-powerboat river, adding a walking, hiking, cycling trail alongside there just seems to really jive with the whole idea. And so I'm putting that out there that maybe, like I said, I know Mr. Taylor was, was, you know, working on some concepts around a hiking trail, walking trail. Maybe that's a better alternative that avoids the use. And, and, and part of my thought on that is, we have so much of that property now in, in the town ownership. We have the King Street Park, we have the Huron Street Park. And it, it's not Huron Street, isn't, but you know where I mean when I say Huron Street. Part to you, thank you. It just seems to make a lot more sense. I question whether we could actually get to the cat trail anyways through that rail bed. You know, we only go so far, and then you enter Stone Mills, that's beyond our control anyways. But, I mean, I don't think it has to always be on a rail bed to be a continuous trail. So, you know, I know my comments were a little bit negative last time, and so I just wanted to put out there very sort of positive, different mindset as an alternative. And that's really all I wanted to say on that. Thank you.
Any, any other unfinished business? And thank you for mentioning the river is non-motorized too, because we, we still, the residents are still having, still having trouble with, with seadews and, and small craft whipping through there at quite a speed. The OPP can't really, can't really police it, because they haven't got boats small enough to, to put in there. But I guess with the low water, you know, to hit enough deadheads, it, it might slow a few of them down. And I do think that we do need to find out if there is a way that we can put it into a non-motorized area. So it would be a water trail for kayaks and so on, and, and a lot of people are using King Street Park. So thank you for that. Any other unfinished business? Under 8.1, council had asked for an update on the timing of the land sale review. And Mr. Fleming from Cunningham Swan has provided the following update. KPMG is anticipating mid to end of June for the report. Cunningham Swan will then need to review and prepare an opinion for council. Mid to end of June for the report. Cunningham Swan will then need to review and prepare an opinion for council. So mid-July for a report to council should be reasonable. KPMG, we're finishing up interviews. Uh, I think I'll take a motion to, to, to receive the update, uh, from, uh, from Cunningham Swan, Deputy Mayor Kaiser, Counsel McCormack. Any comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, motion is carried. No committee reports this evening. Staff reports, infrastructure services, Oliver Side Road Bridge replacement. Is this Jeff and Peter coming into this, please? Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
All right, uh, I'll let you go ahead with the, with the explanation, anything you want to highlight, and then I'm sure you'll have some questions from council.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, um, it's as per report, it's for the reconstruction of the Oliver Side Road Bridge. Includes a full replacement of the bridge. Um, currently, the bridge has a. Five-ton load limit on it. It was restricted down in twenty twenty. Um, this, the replacement of this bridge would not have any load restrictions implied, um, post-construction. And, uh, with the. Businesses that are in the area, the greenery that's in operation, that it is a concern to staff, um, with the loads that could accidentally. Um, be going over this bridge, it is of, is of a concern and an importance that it would be replaced. Uh, we had a tender go out, uh, we had four complete submissions turned in and, as you can see with the. Prices, they are. I believe that we have a, a very competitive bidding process. Here, answer any questions.
Okay, yeah, Counsel Penau.
Through you, Mayor, thank you very much. Uh, Jeff, could you just run through the numbers for me, please, uh, on the staff recommendation? Um, it's, I see that, uh, the National Structures have a sum of nine ninety seven, five forty six oh four. Um, and then a total project award of one one four two three oh five, including the HST. Um, there's. If I take the nine nine seven, five forty six and then times that by one point one three. There seems to be about fifteen thousand dollars that I, unless I'm doing my math wrong. But if I took nine nine seven, five forty.
Through Madam Mayor, that would be the, uh, the HST that would be payable by the, the town most likely. There's a, there's a port, we got a rebated portion back of HST, so. It does include the town's rebated HST.
Because it is a recovery, okay?
Yes.
No, I, I, I don't think that that was my question. If we take the nine ninety seven, five forty six. And then that was what National Structures put in. And then, then the next line states with the total projected cost award, project cost award. Of one million, one hundred forty two thousand, three oh five. If I take the nine ninety seven, five forty six times one point one three, I get one million, one hundred twenty seven thousand, two hundred and twenty six dollars. Not one one four two. So I'm just wondering if there was another charge in there that I'm not seeing because it says with the total projected cost.
I, I see, Jeff, I, I see that our treasures, uh, would, would, would you like Paul to speak to the, the figures as well?
Uh, yes, yeah, I would. So, um, it, it's actually, Dave, if you take the nine nine seven, five forty six oh four. Plus fifty thousand, plus seventy five thousand. Gives you one 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 two, I believe, uh, and then you add in the non-rebatable portion of taxes. So we, um, we get a rebate on the, on, on the, on the, a great amount of it. But some of it we still have to pay. So what you would do is take those three numbers and times it by one point zero one seven six. And that represents the portion of HST that we do not get rebated. So what this price is saying, uh, Counsel Penau, is that this, uh, one million, one hundred forty two thousand, three hundred and five. Dollars is what will go into the GL as our cost. And then anything above that will be, um, or the amount that's above that would be rebated by the, uh, by the province.
Okay, thanks. That, that was what my question was, I, I was wondering. Because it says a sum and then it says a total project, so I just wanted to make sure that we were accounting for all of the other numbers that were there up to fifty thousand, seventy five thousand. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, uh, to Jeff or Paul on the, the project? So. Um, you do have a staff recommendation before you. Did you have your hand up again, Pastor Penau?
I, I did, thank you, uh, through your worship. Um, I just wanted to. I'm just wondering what the lifespan of this new bridge would be. And also what kind of a timeframe that we're looking at, uh, to get the project started and, and an end date as well. Thank you.
Through Madam Mayor, it, this is a, a tight construction timeline, um, from the time we were awarded. From budget being passed in, in the twenty twenty one budget, staff started working on this right away with. Preliminary design, all the hydrology, geotechnical studies, um. If, if council was to award this tonight, there will be an email, um, following, uh, tonight that let. Everyone know that, that the council had awarded this, uh, tomorrow, there would be the order going in for the. Um, pre-stressed concrete girders, that's going to be the controlling factor, the critical path to this being completed on time, um. The low bidder has, has, uh, mentioned that. The, the, the manufacturer of these pre-stressed concrete girders can buy. Most likely have delivery to site by mid-September at the latest. So this would be completed this year, most likely by mid-October.
Okay, thank you. And just, uh, what, what do we expect the life expectancy of this new bridge to be?
Um, through our assets, the, the, the bridge life expectancy would be about fifty years. Um, though properly maintained, just like anything else, hopefully we could extend that even further.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else from council? Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Yes, again, I'm gonna go back to the financial side of it, so this may be one for Paul, your worship, um, but. Uh, reading through the report, uh, obviously it's a little higher than our original estimate from passing the budget. But there's talk about the extra gas tax allotment. And that it would be funded through that because there's a two hundred and thirty four thousand unspoken for, and this is two twenty six. I guess I, my question is around the, the words, extra gas tax allotment. Um, that's, that was a one time that we got announced, uh, what, a month and a half ago or something, and, and that's. Sort of bonus money that we're putting towards capital? Uh, through, uh, uh, through the mayor, um, yes, that's correct, uh. Deputy Mayor Kaiser, uh, we, we received an extra, um, uh, four hundred and four thousand, five hundred and twenty six. It is a one-time top-up. It was to help municipalities out as a kind of a. Uh, an extra amount of towards, um, capital works and all the things that gas tax would, would normally go towards. Uh, after COVID nineteen. We had another one-time payout, I believe it was. I'm gonna say sixteen, somewhere around there, uh, was the last time we saw it. So every once in a while. Uh, we, we do get this to top up and, um. So we, we have it through other projects in, in the approved, uh, twenty twenty one capital budget. We've spent our regular gas tax allotment, so these are the two projects. That we spend within about eight thousand dollars of this, this extra or this, I, I guess this bonus amount. So this will not affect the tax rate, this will not affect the, uh, rate pairs at this point.
Perfect, thank you. Excellent answer. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Um, I, I guess to, to, uh, go ahead, Counsel Richardson.
Sorry, worship, I, I was just gonna make the staff recommendation, uh, but I'll let you speak first.
Oh, okay, I, I just, just one question. Now, how do you do that? Um, either Paul or Jeff, was there any availability? Uh, uh, of grants to help us with this project? You know, I think Jeff might be frozen. Jeff, was, was, was there, were there any, I, I know that, uh, for, for things like this that come up that aren't really planned. Um, were there, were there, uh, any available, um. Grants for us to apply for, for this or through Paul, one or the other, please?
I'll, I'll let Paul answer this one, um, I, I don't, I don't believe that we had, we didn't. Staff are always looking for extra grants and that, and I don't believe, but I'll let Paul pick that one.
Okay, yep.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Madam Mayor, um. No, there, there weren't any, uh, grants in the past. There's been some FCM, FCM grants and some extra OCIF capital grants. Um, it doesn't fit, right now, the, there's a lot of, uh, grants to do with, uh. Cleaner air, clean, um, uh, greener initiatives, uh, but there hasn't been a grant. At this point, um, uh, for, uh, this work, especially within the timeframe. If there had been one with a tight turnaround, this actually would have been, um, perfect because it was shovel-ready and, and, and ready to go. Um, but just so council is aware, we have actually found a service that we subscribe to. That, uh, gives us grant notifications once a week. I know we talked about that in the past, it was about seven hundred and fifty dollars for the year. So we received, um, fifty-two notifications of, of, uh, upcoming grants that would, um. Uh, apply to municipalities, so we are keeping an eye on that and, uh, no, there, there was not a grant for this one.
Perfect, thank you. I, I just, uh, for the listening public, I wanted to make sure that they, they knew that we are always scouring. Uh, everywhere to be able to get grants and, and I, I was aware that, that we weren't eligible, but I wanted to ask the question. I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, Jeff, but, uh, I, I think the public thinks sometimes that we're not out looking for these and, and. Um, Paul's right, everything right now seems to be green and I guess a bridge isn't green. The only other comment before I take Terry's is, it's too bad that the timing is in September for. The industries that are out in that area, so, you know, um. I know that I got a call from Herb last year, uh, when the bridge was shut down, which was no one's fault. Because we got the report and we had no, no choice but to do it. But I just hope that we can put out as much communication and, and help all the industries that use that and the residents be able to. To have a heads up so they're not getting partway up there, so, yeah, Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
There's your green angle, worship. It's, uh, preventing a lot of extra driving to get around. If they could just cut across that bridge, it'll save a lot of the environment, so.
There you go, we'll, we'll stand their hall and grain on top of all that. There you go, Jeff, there's your reason to apply.
I, I, through you, through you, Madam Mayor, too. I was talking to Mr. Hart, uh, earlier in the week, or last week, I guess it was. I did apologize for the timing of this, but, uh, he does know through the correspondence, uh, back and forth that. Um, it wa- it was at the, of the utmost importance and we have been, um, pursuing this. As fast as possible and he's just glad that the bridge is going to be done.
I'm, I'm sure he is, Jeff.
Looking to be done.
Yeah, great, thank you. And I, I'm, I'm sure, I am sure that, uh, that you'll keep him, keep him. It won't be like the surprise when the bridge had to be closed. Counsel Richardson, you wanted to move staff recommendation?
Staff recommendation for motion, worship, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, seconded by. Counselor Norrie, comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thanks, Jeff, and thanks, Paul, uh, this is, uh, gonna be quite a, quite a thing to get done for, for that area. Thank you very much. Uh, infrastructure services, uh, waste disposal site twenty twenty, annual monitoring reports. Is Christie coming in on this? See, yes, she is, I can see her coming up. Good evening, Christie, how are you this evening?
Good, thanks, how are you?
Fine, thank you. I'll, I'll let you go ahead and speak to your report and then I'm sure that you'll get some questions from council.
Thank you, I'll just do a quick, um, overview of my report that you have before you. Um, the South Fred Waste Disposal Site is an active landfill for bulky waste only. Um, the site also houses a transfer station, as you know, for household or domestic waste and recyclables. Um, our recent surveys noted that there are currently over two hundred and sixteen thousand cubic meters of remaining capacity at the site. Which at the current fill rate is, it is expected that that will, um. There's approximately forty-two years left for landfilling at that site. I should note that this could be altered, um, by a variety of factors, including surface or groundwater, um, quality trends. Or an increase to our current fill rates. Um, the Roblin Waste Disposal Site is a closed capped landfill that operates as a transfer station only. We accept, um, household or domestic waste there as well as bulky waste and a variety of recycled. Recyclables for transfer, um, off-site for disposal at, um, alternate locations. In twenty twenty, we successfully diverted over a hundred and thirty tons of recyclables between the two sites. And those, both of those sites will continue to operate as they have been, um. With surface water and groundwater monitoring to continue as per environmental compliance approval throughout twenty twenty one and, and moving forward.
Thank you, uh, Christie. Any comments or questions for Christie? Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Thank you, worship. Christie, um, used, used the word current fill rates when talking about South Fred. Can you define what you mean by that? Like, are we looking at year over year or is that historical, looking back over a longer period? Is there any recent changes? I know that last year's. Uh, just because everybody's stuck at home, there's a lot of yard waste picked up and that added to the brush pile, but. I'm sure garages were cleaned out that hadn't been cleaned out in a while. So can you just define that and put some timeline parameters on that? Is that realistic, that forty-two years?
So I, I can't speak, um, it, it is in the report, I can't speak, speak specifically, um, how long they looked back on the average. Um, but I do know, speaking personally, I am surprised to see that it wasn't, um, a, a lower time, timeline. Um, based on the fill rates that we see, we saw specifically in twenty twenty. So, um, I do think that. Um, the engineers that we use, um, um, base that on, uh, on averages. I, I want to say at least the last ten years, um, but they do a specific survey on the site, so. So it, it, it should be, uh. Pretty conservative.
Okay, I, I didn't mean to push on the spot, but thank you for that.
Okay, any other questions? Um, Christie, I think every year I might ask you this, but, but we, we. We are not required to do monitoring reports on the old landfill that's down on Water Street, close to the wastewater. That's a different kind of report that comes forward.
Um, that site specifically is, um, yes, it's a bit different. There's no environmental compliance approval on the site. Um, we just completed a, um. Uh, uh, this spring, we completed, our staff completed a monitoring plan that took place over the past, um, year or so. As requested by the Ministry of Environment, um, to gain some additional information about that site. Um, which included groundwater and surface water sampling for a variety, variety of parameters. And, um, we just compiled a report through EVB Engineering that was actually submitted to the ministry earlier this week. So we expect that once they review it, they'll, um, get back to us, um, in the coming months with kind of. A, um, some recommendations for how we should move forward with, with the monitoring at that site specifically.
Okay, so the reason that I asked this, the, the monitoring and the monitoring costs, because I know they've been extensive down there. Are, are they, and this might be a question for Peter or Paul, uh, or yourself, but are they lumped in with. Uh, on our GL with the line item that says, um, monitoring for, for waste, uh, waste disposal sites?
There is a specific GL for the Water Street landfill, um, and we've kind of. Kept that, um, conservative because we've been waiting for these recommendations from the ministry, so. Um, as, we're, we're not exactly sure what, what that's gonna look like for the future, but, um, we trust that by the end of this year, we will have a plan for that.
That's perfect, thank you very much. Any further questions, uh, for Christie? On this, if not, you do have a recommendation before you, that council received for information. Uh, and, and well, as, uh, received for information, this, the reports, so, sorry. I'm hearing noise in the background, I'm hoping that my cat doesn't come in and scream in the middle of it, so. Uh, so staff recommendation, who's gonna move that for me? Counsel Richardson, seconded by Counselor Norrie. Comments or questions? None, all in favor of the motion? Thank you, Christie, and you seem to be happy with this, although I know you're, you want to get the diversion rate up higher and higher constantly, don't we? Thanks very much for your work on this. Infrastructure Services, Public Works, Harrington Lane Bridge, final report. Who's speaking? There comes Peter. So Peter, where do you want to start, uh, with talking about this? Do you want to bring any key points to, to our attention? Or would you like, uh, council to start a conversation?
Uh, through your worship, uh, perhaps I can just give a very quick summary of, of the work that staff had accomplished to date. Uh, so the first thing that, that staff undertook was the preliminary engineering. Uh, so we spent approximately fifteen thousand dollars to date on that. That, we use that information to try to get a well-rounded, uh, background on land use planning, transportation. Uh, then we've looked into financials to see what some of those, what those, some of those options would look like. Uh, staff, staff compiled a list of different options that council may wish to consider. Uh, with anything, there's advantages and disadvantages with any option, and there could perhaps even be other options that aren't listed. Um, e- essentially, at the end of the day, we're staff, we've hit the crossroads on this one. Uh, and as far as staff authority to, to move anything further on this, and we're awaiting council direction on how to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Council, comments, questions? Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Thank you, worship. Um, I was talking to, uh, one of the Harringtons. Actually, his name is Jeff Don, but he is, uh, grandson to Don Harrington. Um, I, I, he wasn't available to talk in the last couple of days just because of his work schedule, but I'm thinking that, I'm thinking that before we have, uh, too much discussion on some of these options, looking specifically thinking of option four, land disposition. I think I'd rather want to know where they stand before we even sort of propose going down that road. I mean, certainly we can discuss it, we can, uh, consider it. But I think that the property owners in question, uh, certainly have a part to play in that discussion. Um, and, and I would invite maybe your worship and myself to go out and meet with, uh, a couple of the Harringtons and maybe Peter could join us one day next week, uh, if that is workable and agreeable to everybody. It's kind of interesting. And I just want to say this out loud. It's kind of a, an ironic circumstance that Mr. Don was on his way to work yesterday, south of town, and was traveling south on County Road Eight near the old HH Langford School. And he was actually witness to a car T-boning a tractor pulling into a field. And that is exactly the sort of situation he does not want to have to endure by using forty-one to access the north end of their farm when they've been, you know, used to using a bridge. And I know that's not justification to build a bridge, but it's, it's just, it's exactly the sort of negative interaction he doesn't want ever be a part of. Um, and it was just ironic that we were talking about it yesterday. And, uh, and then he witnessed that last night. Um, you know, a car was trying to pass the tractor, the tractor executed a left-hand turn. T-bone. Um, anyways, so I'd like to, to have some discussions with the Harringtons to see what might be agreeable to them. I believe we can have reasonable discussions, but, uh, obviously, I mean, I can't support, and I don't think anybody else could support spending, you know, anything close to like we just talked about Oliver Side Road for the limited use over there. These are completely different roads, completely different traffic amounts, and certainly it's not justified in this case to look at that kind of an option. I just, I guess through the process, when, when this all started, I was hoping for a much more cost-effective solution, uh, some initial ideas. And I know what I could do if I owned the road and I made my own bridge, but that's not something that municipality could do, uh, in, in, in the real world anyway. So. I know that doesn't give us much, but I don't know if it's a motion to defer or if we just say, let's consider option four. But then that dialogue has to happen, but that doesn't necessarily land us on option four necessarily.
Counsel Richardson?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, I, I was going to agree with, with the deputy, but I was just going to suggest option four to, to explore. Um, by exploring a land disposition options, I don't think i- i- it narrows us into any kind of thing. It doesn't pin us down to anything. Now, whether that disposition option means selling it, leasing it, doing whatever, I, I, I mean, we have a very, and I, I feel for the Harringtons because I think they've got some very bonafide points. Um, but it doesn't make sense to put a million dollars into the bridge for, for one user group to use. So, um, a- a- as I see it, I mean, I would suggest we do option number four, we explore it. Uh, we're not committing to anything. We're exploring the fact of whether we should be disposing of it, whether we should be leasing it, how we're going to deal with it. And, 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 and by do it, by exploring it, I think we do have to, to approach the user groups, specifically the Harringtons and whoever else may have a vested interest into that. Um, and, and see where that takes us, because it may take us that they have no interest into it whatsoever. Um, or they may have a lot of interest into it, but by exploring it, I think that's, that's the option that we go, and then staff can come back with a, with a report as to, um, exactly what their interests are, or anybody that does have vested interest into it. And that, at least that gets us heading in one direction.
Counsel, and then Counsel Johnson?
Uh, thank you, through your worship. If I could, uh, ask Peter a question?
Sure.
Hi, Peter. Uh, Peter, if we were going to explore option number four, what would that look like as in, um, how, how, how would, how would the road be ended for the traffic that's on it now? And for the traffic that has been used, 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 used to being used as a, as a shortcut? Um, how, how would we, what would that look like? And then the second part of that question would be, what liabilities would we have if we did sell this bridge that we know has, has a limited capacity right now? And whoever buys a bridge continues to use it, right?
Those might be hard questions, but I, I just, ju- just thinking outside the box here, what would look like? Would we have to put barriers there or, or a gate? And then whoever buys it, say the Harringtons did buy it, would they, would it be a locked gate or, or something along those lines?
Uh, through your worship, so what the site would look like if the, that portion of the unmaintained road allowance was disposed of is exactly that? Uh, so there would typically be some cor- uh, some form of a permanent barrier, like a guardrail system at the end to prevent traffic, because if it was disposed of, it'd be private property. So we'd want to deter use from the general public for using it. Uh, with respect to the bridge itself, um, you know, the, any potential purchaser would know the exact location or sorry, the, the exact condition of, of the, of what would be their asset, I guess. And, uh, so I'm, I'm pretty confident that that could be sold basically as is, and they would know exactly what they'd be purchasing. So.
Thank you. Uh, just to follow up to that, if you don't mind, Mayor. Um, so then there would still be some, some sort of a cost associated to us to, to make some kind of a a, a larger area for, for cars or trucks that, uh, the GPS has taken them down, that they would need to, to turn around or something like that on both sides. We would have to do something along those lines.
Uh, through your worship, so there, there's concrete barriers are there now, so the, through traffic has been stopped for some time now. Uh, so with risk, with respect, typically at a dead end road, there's some kind of a turning bulb or something, so people could get in and out quickly, uh, without using, uh, without using, uh, personal driveways. So that's something staff would have to look at to see if there was minor improvements needed there, but that would be fairly, fairly minor in nature.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I wanted to thank Peter and staff for taking the time to put this report together and to consider the future needs of the community and the possibilities of what this road would look like to us in the future. Um, as the other counselors have said, I also am in favor of exploring the land disposition options and I agree, we just, it's a beginning of a discussion, um, but I can't see how that we can we, we, it's, it's, I feel it's the only option that we have that makes sense for the rest of the community. The other options, um, would pay, would put a very large burden on the rest of the taxpayers. So that's, I think that's just the only way that we can go.
Thank you. Anything further from counsel? If not, I would entertain a motion, counsel, as to the way you want to go, because, uh, certainly, uh, we need to give them some guidance. This has been hanging around for a bit. I'm sure that we'd like to see it go somewhere as well as the Harrington and Don families. Counsel Richardson?
Thank you, worship. I'll make the motion that we, uh, we take option number four, we direct staff to explore land disposition options with respect to the Harrington, uh, road bridge, and that they, they come back to us with a report, uh, hopefully sooner than later.
Okay, thank you. Moved by Counsel Richardson, seconded by Counsel McCormack. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. I think Counsel Norrie might be frozen. Nope, there he is back again. Okay. Infrastructure, sorry, um, Financial Services, FCM Asset Management Application Update. Paul, are you coming in to report to us on this, please?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor and counsel. Um, I'm not going to speak too much to it. I think it's fairly self-explanatory. Uh, but I did want to add a little bit of a, a background context, uh, to it. So we'd applied for the grant for asset management software for the town of Greater Napanee. Uh, since we've moved towards joining with county, um, that if we were successful with that funding grant, uh, it would be null and void. Um, because we, we've already got a system that is being charged through the county and we're not able to, um, change the recipient on the grant. Um, it's one thing that wasn't written down here, and, and, and I'm sure that some counsel probably heard this before, but it's, it's, it's fairly well-known among the municipal finance community, though not documented and certainly not legislatively, uh, worded, um, that it's, it's not great to turn down, uh, a funding application when successful to, can reflect negatively uh, on the municipality. So we were able to reach out, talk to FCM and make changes, modifications to the grant. We're looking at an announcement for the grant about the next four weeks. We're diverting it to, um, activities that would go hand in hand with the implementation of the software. Uh, I know that, uh, Counsel Penelope asked some questions about where we were in our asset management compared to other municipalities, um, and where there are options that we could look at. So it really got me, you know, thinking, uh, after the last council meeting, uh, and this is kind of where we're running. Uh, or I should say where we've, we've diverted that grant so that we're not turning it down. Uh, we are successfully, uh, using it. Um, and using it in a way, again, that would be hand in hand with the implementation to give us that ability to, um, boost forward or get a jumpstart on those activities. Uh, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions that counsel may have.
Any questions to Paul on this, uh, report and the opportunity? Counsel Richardson?
Yeah, and, and Paul, please correct me if I'm wrong. Is this the same, uh, asset management plan that we were talking about, getting in, in with the county, but there's add-ons that we could add to it for our own purpose? If, if we wanted to, is, is that the same process than I'm thinking about?
Well, um, it's, so it's the asset management plan is a, is, is a plan to, uh, tell us what needs, like, uh, to get all our assets together in sort of an inventory type a system, look at what condition they're in and start to put a plan together about when, when they need to be replaced. Um, so it is, that portion is different. There, there are some other add-ons, but we're uh, because of the fact that we're just, uh, so, it's, sorry, I just wanted to break into two pieces if I could, Counsel Richardson. The implementation is going to be going ongoing through twenty twenty-one and into twenty twenty-two as the report that Chris Wager from the county came through, there's about three stages within that. Um, at this point, we don't know which, um, I guess, extra pieces of software might be advantageous to us. Uh, and, and at that point, the, the funding, the, the, um, timing for using the funding would, would run out. Um, and we need to be a little bit more specific in the funding of, um, uh, the funding application. Um, and, uh, at, a- and at this point, we don't know, uh, which portions or which add-ons that the county might be interested in that might end up benefiting the whole group. So therefore, we don't know which portions would be applicable to the municipal tax bill uh, or the mun- sorry, the municipal portion of the tax bill and which portions will be applicable to the county portions of the tax bill. So unfortunately, at this point, I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying and, and, and I hundred percent agree with it, but the timing's just not there. And because of the fact that we've already put the application in, um, they're going to be announcing very soon. Um, this ticks the boxes to help us get forward, um, and, and meet all the deadlines to fulfill that application. And then we can look at other applications coming up. Um, FCM put out a grant, uh, about, uh, three years ago, uh, for this type of a service, again, last year, this year, and I believe it's going to come in another year. So, um, to your point, that would be a perfect opportunity for any of those add-ons, uh, i- in the next round of, 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 uh, funding. Um, and, uh, we can certainly look towards that, and I think that's a terrific idea. Um, but for this one, just because of the timing, uh, we need to find something that we could, um, take advantage of, um, that we're ready to move on. And, and this is one of those portions, if that makes sense.
Yep, it does. Thank you.
Anything further from counsel? If not, you do have a recommendation before you, uh, to receive and, and directing staff to apply for the grant opportunity. Moved by Deputy Mayor Kaiser, seconded by Counsel Norrie. Any further comments or questions? The only comment would be, no, we never say no to a grant. We can never turn one down. We just can't do, we just can't do that, Paul. All in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Financial Services, twenty twenty-one Capital Budget Update. Paul, would you like to, uh, speak to, speak to this?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I promise counsel, I am not going to go on like I did at the last one with the operating. I even had a little bit of feedback from some of the staff on this. Um, and, uh, what I, the only thing I will point out is, um, I did bring forward the operating update for, for Q one. Uh, and at the time I mentioned that, uh, just through timing, did not have the opportunities to update, um, the capital portion, so I would come back with that. Um, just to make it a little more relevant, instead of March thirty-first, I used the end of April as a cutoff. Um, I think that the, uh, report is very detailed, so I'd leave it open to councils, um, to bring some questions back. But I did want to point out that when we come to, um, reporting for Q two, now, two things. One is the timing of it, because Q two ends June thirtieth, we have to wait two to three weeks for all the invoices to come in, get them loaded into the system, and then take some time to update these sheets, bring, bring them forward, and then meet with the, uh, the various directors, which then throws us into the second half of July. So I'm looking at coming back, um, in, in August, if, if we're having a, a, a meeting. Sorry, I haven't checked the schedule. Uh, but I wanted to explain that there is a bit of a lag in the information, but also let counsel know that the next report will be the operating and the capital together. Uh, and, um, I'll present it to counsel, or I should say, submit it for council's review, and then just wait for questions, uh, so that I don't want to lose anybody, uh, falling asleep to the, uh, presentation of all the financials. However, I would, uh, be happy to answer any questions that counsel may have.
Counsel, questions for Paul on this update? Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Thank you, worship. And this, it's not specific to this, but because of this, there is a lot of mention in here in the first couple of pages about some of the fleet asset, uh, purchases. And it may, may recall that at our last county council meeting, there was initiative by one of the counselors to put forward a policy whereby vehicles, especially in the light fleet, cars and SUVs and whatever, that, uh, green alternatives, hybrid, those electric vehicles should be considered. So my question is, when's the right time to discuss looking at our fleet management policy that we could include such a provision within there to prioritize greener vehicle choices? Is that something we should be talking about late summer now, fall? What, what's the best time to talk about that?
Uh, through, through the mayor, Deputy Mayor Kaiser, I, I think anytime might be a good time to talk about it to establish the parameters of it. I know counsel was very, um, um, much against small vehicles, feeling that that wasn't, uh, proper for town staff to drive small vehicles. Um, and that really consists of most of the Um and that really consists of most of the green vehicles. The um the larger trucks that counsel is in favor for um at this point are pretty cost prohibitive. Um don't know when we're going to see that kind of change, but we can certainly start the discussions and. And one of the one of them might be, you know, do do we want to look at? You know, there are some cars, Corporate Services has a car. Uh I know that there was a a feeling of moving away from cars for. Um Development Services. So so which departments would would be interested in the cars and which ones counsel would like to see changed over? And then some research done by staff into the pickups. I know, I know that um Tesla was uh releasing a a truck and and I know there's an SUV. By Mitsubishi um that might be for could replace some compacts. But I I think maybe uh you you're right, maybe we could even discuss it during the twenty twenty-two. Uh budget deliberations, but uh I think it would probably be wise for staff to kind of. Do a little bit of research into that and then we can have those discussions and and let's say September, October. Does does that sound reasonable?
If if uh th- thank you. Yeah, it does. And if it's all right with you, worship, I guess I would like to. Not through a way of emotion necessarily, but just a polite suggestion that maybe staff could be prepared for. Uh offering some suggestions on where it's appropriate in the fleet to include that at the time of our budget deliberations this fall. Is that appropriate to just do it that way as in Paul's notes?
Sure.
Sure. It looks like I'm getting agreement from Mr. Dalber, so I'm gonna just leave it like that for now. I had nothing else specific to this financial report. Thank you.
Anything further from uh from counsel? Certainly, good detailed report. Uh the the one thing, I I'm picking much smaller things out, I guess, than some are. Um I I'm looking at the water fountain for the splash pad, which of course is a sore point and I'm sure will be pointed out to us later. Uh that it was deferred. Make a model undecided. Uh plumbing logistics still. Being determined, work to be completed by Q four. It is that. It it's probably gonna have to come from Peter or somebody or be answered later. I- is that due to COVID? Are we not? Comfortable with putting up a water fountain and leaving it open? Uh during COVID at the splash pad?
Through your worship, uh the delivery of such parts can be a little bit challenging these days. The lead the lead time is significant on some of this stuff, so.
Okay, no, 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 that's fine. No, that's good. Thanks. I just had seen and I knew that had had it been a priority. Seems small to some people, but I think it's important. Others not. Thank you for the answer. Any further questions? For Paul, okay? If not, you do have a recommendation uh before you uh that we received from information in twenty twenty-one. Capital budget updates moved by. Counsel Norrie, seconded by Counsel McCormack. If there are no further comments or questions, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. No bylaws this evening. New business. We have uh new business coming from Counsel McCormack to uh speak to. Request to support Ontario nurses to change in Bill one twenty-four. Counsel McCormack.
Well, thank you, worship. Um. Just gonna speak to the letter that's attached to the agenda without having to read the whole letter. Uh but I'd like to make a motion and respectfully ask that counsel support. Um the Ontario nurses and send a letter to the premier, Doug Ford, as well as Minister of Health Christine Elliott, requesting that the government. Make changes to Bill one twenty-four and allow nurses to be treated fairly and equally within uh with the other frontline. Workers that were not affected by the constraints of this bill. And at the same time, if the motion is uh carried, that we uh request the uh support of other municipalities in Ontario. To do the same.
Okay, do you have that uh in writing that you can supply Madam Clerk with a a copy of your motion? So that she has a Counsel McCormack? Or do you have it already, Lindsay?
Through you, your worship, I do have a copy of the letter that John submitted and um I I'm good with the the motion.
Okay, good. Thank you. So that was moved by Counsel McCormack. I need a secondar so that we can have a conversation on. Counsel Richardson is seconding that. Um comments or questions? If not, um. I will call, sorry, Counsel, Deputy Mayor Kaiser, did you wish to speak to it?
I, yeah, I. Wasn't sure if I was gonna speak or not. I remember Mayor Shermerhorn said sometimes it's better just to stay quiet. Uh and I always respected that comment. Anyways. Surprisingly, I respected that comment. I I. I'm not normally inclined to to take this kind of a tact, but at times I believe it is our responsibility. To advocate on behalf of others to the province. I mean, certainly we do. Uh but in this case, I mean, I can't help but support something like this. I I think the letter as Mr. McCormack has written it. And the points expressed here in, there's some stark numbers there, and I think it's appropriate. Uh especially at this time and especially given everything else. We saw a great deal of support for personal support workers. In long-term care facilities where they got a temporary uh wage bump to support them in the pandemic time. I I I I I'm gonna support this. That's I guess all I wanted to say, and that's.
Any further comments? The motion, I think some might say that we're treating one section of the health, the the health workers differently than others, but. Really, it does stand out that the nurses are the ones that are are being uh overlooked. And and I mean, statistics are saying now. That uh we could lose up to thirty percent of our health workers, not just nurses. But our health workers overall, because they have just been dragged through every knothole. That that has been possible and exposed to them uh through this COVID. They they just, you know. They're not gonna survive. So anything I think that we can. A um compensate those and and acknowledge those that have worked through it. And B to encourage others to to come forward. Uh already, the universities uh that have the Bachelor of Nursing Science. Are saying that their applications are down almost forty percent. Forty percent. You know, that's that that's a that's a pretty tough number. And um you look at the age of of some of the nurses. Um that have uh that have worked through this, and I think they've doubly and triply aged, and I say that with all due respect. Any further comments or questions? Yeah, Counsel Richardson?
Uh thank you, worship. Just to add further to that, we have to keep in mind that. The nurse's work has only just begun with COVID. Um the fallout of of the medical. Requirements are going to be needed for things that were put on the back burner over the last year and a half is going to be unfathomable and uh. And and when we suggest that the COVID's over and life's gonna go back to normally, it will for a lot of us. It's not going to for for the medical profession. So we just have to keep that in mind. So I think this is a good idea.
Yeah, spot on. Good, a good comment, Counsel Richardson. If there are no further comments or questions, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Any other new business? Deputy Mayor Kaiser, and then I'll go to Counsel McCormack.
Thank you, worship. This is a question, and maybe uh this just came up sort of in the later afternoon and and through the start of the meeting. So it's a question for staff, if anybody knows, maybe this is a county level question. When we look on Google Maps, when we look on Apple Maps, when we do any of our map searches and thinking of Harrington Lane and the truck that got lost. And followed his GPS down a road that he never should have been on with that heavy vehicle. Who's responsible for providing the mapping companies with the right information? When I was looking at the Napanee River, King Street Park to Huron Street Park. At the top of Huron Street, there's a little pin on the Apple Maps that says Flying J. Like, there's some glaring mistakes on on digital maps and people rely on those things today. So is that within our wheelhouse to provide correcting information or is that a county level thing? And how can we get? Some possible correcting information out there? Cause like I said, people rely on this. And and to a large extent, our communities rely on drawing in visitors. Visitors need these things to get here. How can we help them?
I see that Mr. Zatterberg just come up, so he's gonna give us some uh some answers here. Yeah. Brandt, you're you're muted. You need to have your headset on, maybe.
You hear me now?
There you go.
When we become aware of uh serious issues that could lead to problems with traffic, we do notify the county. And the county through the for through their connections uh will do what they can to make changes.
Okay, so I will hold on to that one in my notebook for our next county meeting. Thank you, Mr. Zatterberg.
Thank you. Uh any other new business, Counsel McCormack? Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Uh one more motion this evening. Um and it's that uh the town. Join the County of Lennox at Addington and the County of Prince Edward. To send a urgent letter to the MTO. Uh requesting that they put the second ferry in service immediately. Um things are opening up and uh. We know that the certain the ferries have been serviced and they're ready to go. And uh we just need, I, we've had this conversation uh uh a couple of days ago. But I'm requesting that the town with both counties, the Dora Park, and send a letter to the MTO. Uh and the province requesting that this the uh full service started immediately.
I need a seconder for that motion. Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Lindsay, you've got what you need there? And I did speak, Counsel McCormack, we do have the uh, we do have it on record from the warden signing it uh last year. So we can bring that forward as support and um certainly yeah. Um Mayor Ferguson in Prince Edward County has has operated the same thing, so I'll make sure that I touch base with staff. To get that so that it can uh it can can get out to the right people at the right time. And and hopefully uh Minister Mulroney just won't pr- we promise to come down and have a look at it. Should maybe with staff, she'll actually get it fixed. Counsel McCormack, sorry.
And may and maybe if staff feels that it's uh it's uh worthwhile, we could also join with a letter from the Parkway Association. Uh which has a an MOU with the uh with the uh the ministry, so. Um it's, this is extremely frustrating anyways.
So you wanna add that to your your uh motion?
Yes, please.
Your your own, your own friendly amendment? Seconder, you're good with that? Okay, Lindsay, got what you need? Okay, further comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. Any other new business? Uh any notices of motion? Any statements by members? Sorry, Deputy Mayor Kaiser, and then I'll go to Counsel Richardson.
Thank you, worship. A- as we were sitting here during the meeting, I looked out my window a few minutes ago. And saw one of our good uh roads trucks hauling a piece of equipment up to Bayview Drive. I just wanted to make a shout out. You know, I've seen trucks go by every day of the week, including Sunday. Uh our roads crews, I don't think, get enough credit and often enough for the extra effort, the extra hours. The odd hours that they put in in supporting us. I know that not everybody gets their road fixed as soon as they'd like it fixed. Not gonna name any from the north or part of the municipality or anything, but. You know, when they are out there working by the G's, these guys work hard, they work long hours, they work long days, and they'll even put in time weekends, as I said. Uh they were watering Bayview Drive that was crumbled last week to keep the dust down for the residents up there. And doing it on a Sunday even. And and as I said, you know, here it was eight o'clock at night and they're driving by with a piece of equipment to be ready for tomorrow. First thing in the morning. Uh just wanted to make that shout out for our for our crews out there. And the other thing I'd like to mention, your worship, is uh. This is Lindsay's final council meeting with us, and I just wanted to give a shout out and a fare thee well as she heads off to pursue. Other fronts in Loyalist, and I wish her all the best. Cheers.
Thank you.
Any further statements by members? You beat me to the punch there, Deputy Mayor Kaiser, but thank you so much for that. I'm still, two two that I, oh, Mr. Cowery, I see you popped up. Nope.
Just uh, Madam Mayor, when uh counsel's done by statements by members, if I could just have a moment.
Certainly. Um with uh, I I just like to make two uh two quick statements, things that I'm sure that we're all getting uh getting. Talked to about, probably me more so than than others on the complaints about the traffic on the Upper River. Uh we still do have seadews and and some some uh watercraft that are traveling. And at a very excessive speed. The face of that river's changed. It it is. Um you know, there are a lot of young families around it that are swimming in it. There are tons of kayaks. Uh I would like to see, and and I'm not gonna ask staff to do it tonight, but we need to to somehow. Uh find if we can can make that a non-motorized area. I checked with the uh Nathany Rod and Gun Club. They're very much in favor of it. Um they say that there's probably not too much in the way of fishing. And if we're looking at, maybe that would be an alternative trail. I just think it's a good way to go. The other subject that I would like to bring up, understatements by members and and um we have uh. Fratnak uh bylaw doing um a bang-up job on trying to get. Both property standards in the way of grass cutting and certainly parking infractions uh under control. I know that we have been getting. A lot of concerns and complaints, and I think it's because this is something that hasn't been enforced in quite some time. Within the municipality, whether it's rural or whether it's urban. Uh and um I do think that, you know. Maybe a little bit of communication. Um and I see that we do have some on the website now asking people. To make sure that they park carefully and park where they should. Um a- and it's gonna be a change for people, but we do need to make sure. Uh that uh we're we're doing what we should do. We can't have people parking on sidewalks. The other one that has come up is is the storage of of trailers and that's uh travel trailers, and that's a whole other can of worms. That at some point, and I'm not gonna ask staff to tackle it now, but I've had some really good suggestions from people. That uh are storing, some of them storing them the proper way. Um in their yards because they can go side yard or backyard. But but others um want us to be just a little bit lenient if someone is having a repair done to their trailer. You know, could they not have it at their house for a certain period of time, forty-eight hours? But the parking of trailers, the use of trailers, we've been pretty lenient during COVID because a lot of them have been used as almost residents. For for um parents that needed to be able to isolate, families that needed to be able to isolate, and most of all, health workers. So I just think it's something that needs to be in our radar when we come back in the fall. But people need to be aware that there are bylaws. Uh that do it, and maybe it's time that ours was updated, but. I I I know we really can't uh can't control everything at once. Anything further? Mr. Cowery, you had something you wanted to to say.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I I wanted to ask for uh counsel's uh. I guess uh permission uh to unorthodoxly um just give a statement by the CAO. I don't want to steal Lindsay's thunder in any way, but this uh this may be my last uh council meeting. Uh with the town unless there's uh a very pressing issue that comes up or a report that's required at the next meeting. Uh but with uh counsel's permission, if I could make a brief statement.
Certainly.
Thank you very much. And I did write some things down just so I uh I could get through it, but uh. As counsel's aware, this month marks my twenty-fourth year as CAO. And having been hired to build a team of staff to work with twenty-seven elected officials way back in amalgamation. I am very proud of how that team developed. After personally interviewing every single full-time and part-time staff member of the five former municipalities. Each person, based on their individual strengths and interests, were carefully placed into the available positions at that time. It was a difficult process for everyone involved, and not all the staff could be accommodated. But with the addition of a management team that was completed by some competitive external hirings, a team did come together. But with the addition of a management team that was completed by some competitive external hirings, a team did come together. And it has certainly been my pleasure to work with so many exceptional staff, consultants, and legal advisors since amalgamation. After amalgamation, seven elected members joined with the assembled staff and worked through some amazingly complex and challenging times. Tax policy, landfill expansion, new waste contracts, new staffing agreements, assumption of county road systems. New police contracts and the sale of a hydro commission. Were all tackled as a team. This was at a time when the residents were still strongly connected to their former geographic boundaries. And identified closer as neighbors within a hamlet or a church group than they did as residents of a new community. I have had the opportunity to help mentor many staff over this time. And I have learned from them much more than I'm sure they might have even learned from me. But watching them all become so accomplished in their careers has been incredibly rewarding. I was lucky all those years ago to have been given growth opportunities by my CEO, Jack McNamee, prior to amalgamation. I hope, as an organization, the town ensures. That we continue to provide every opportunity for staff to advance and grow in new positions. We should encourage them to learn from other organizations in the hopes they come back to an employer. Who has always treated them fairly and with respect, and I think we've seen that happen before in our, in our past history. It has been my pleasure to serve as Greater Nappany's first CEO and work with the thirty-five elected members of council over that time. I have been. I I can't thank everyone who has served this community in an elected capacity for the opportunities they provided me to work for this community. It has been a time of building. The only way to achieve success and maximize potential. Is to put all the pieces in place and then move in unison to build from that base. We now have a large industrial area to develop. We now have a diverse tax base. We now have solid healthcare facilities. We now have many recreational amenities, hotels, agricultural diversity, and a strong downtown core. And we have twenty-four years of heavy investment in usable public spaces. We have a commit, a community that when facing a challenge now asks to keep Greater Nappany greater. I always said, and since amalgamation in nineteen ninety-seven, it would take a generation to make residents see this as a community. The next generation does see this as one community, and I believe the residents now see this as one community. It is time to build off this great base of accomplishments. Now is the time to bring the community, the staff and elected officials together as a team, build positively. Listen to legitimate negative opinions, do not lose sight of our potential by focusing only on complaints that will have fleeting importance. Over the years, we've heard, it is too hard to move an arena off the fairgrounds. No hotel will ever be interested in locating in this small market. MTO will never allow a travel center that close to an interchange. Power plants can't get built because of NIMBYism. How will this community harness all the pent-up energy and anxiety once the pandemic lifts? How will we advance aquatics? How do we improve medical services? How do we maximize our endless shorelines? Council, staff, ratepayers now have the base of a single community to answer these questions from. Not the five that existed or resisted at times a generation ago. As a team, build off the foundation laid for Greater Nappany to reach as a community the greatest of our collective potentials. I wish council every success in finding the right team leader for your national search to help bring. To help council bring the entire two hundred team member or two hundred team, member team together. And who can then help you harness the energy of sixteen thousand more. To continue to building a bright future, there needs to be a single focus of effort. It has been my pleasure to serve this community for thirty years. I hope the next CEO enjoys the privilege of serving such a great people as much as I have. Good luck to everyone, and thank you to all those who've supported my time as CAO. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Um, thank you, Ray. I'm gonna be really honest here. Um. I had no idea that you were not gonna be here on the twenty-second. Um, and so you've kind of blindsided all of council. Um. But. I'm, I'm gonna make you come back for the twenty-second no matter what. Because, uh, you know, we, we've uh. We've certainly, uh, certainly over the years had had, uh. You know, great working relationships with, with staff and and with you, Ray, and you've always kind of been the, the rock that, uh. That was there, but um, don't worry, this, this, this may not be your last, um. Your last council meeting, or at least it may not be the last Zoom meeting. Uh, that you're getting, uh, getting ready at either a CAO or non-CAO as, as council. I do want to thank you for your years of dedication. I I wish you absolutely, and I'm sure that council joins with me in wishing you. Uh, the absolute best in your new job, which I think you will find extremely challenging, and I think they've found a person. That uh, that's gonna be up to the, up to the job. I don't envy you your drive every day. I am glad that we're gonna get you on lots of committees because you did say that you were still a taxpayer. And and that you, you'd be doing lots of things. Uh. You know, I've, I've certainly had ten years of, of working with you that, um. I can't say we always agreed, but I don't think a CAO and a mayor are supposed to agree on everything. It it'd be pretty boring, but I've always, always found you to be very accessible, that we could speak honestly uh, with each other. Uh, whether we agreed or disagree, and and I think, I think that's, uh, I think that just bodes to. How how much you value this. I I do nothing but wish you and your family. All the best in, in the next part of, part of your career, and I am mad as hell that we had no heads up about this, but that's okay. I'll get even. Thank, thanks, thanks so much, Ray. Counsel, is it, and and want to say anything? Because you didn't know either.
We'll get, we'll get him next meeting.
We, we will. You're right. We'll have a special meeting if we have to. Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to section two thirty-nine of the municipal act. To um, discuss personal matters related to an identifiable individual, to identifiable individuals. And a labor relations matter and a matter concerned regarding pending litigation. I also want to announce that council had adjourned into closed session at five thirty to discuss information. On labor relation matters and that council adjourned into the closed session now for the personnel matters related to identifiable individuals. A labor relations matter and a matter regarding pending litigation. Move by, sorry, that's a long one. Move by, Counselor McCormack, seconded by Counselor Fennell. All in favor of that motion? Motion is carried, and we will see you in a minute in closed session. Thank you, counsel.